Good morning. Today is June 7th, 9:34. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning, we have our invocation led by Pastor Chris Erskine of the Movement Fellowship Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance given by Councilor Clinton Woods. If you'll please stand and join us, thank you.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name in all of the earth. From the rising of the sun to the setting of the same, it is your name that is worthy of all praise. Thank you for another day that you have blessed us to see, one that we are participating in, one that you already provided for us. So we thank you, and we honor you, and we bless you today. I ask God that your provisions will be with our mayor and with our city council. I pray for each of our councilors as they execute business on behalf of each and every one of our citizens. I pray, God, that they will work with esteem and with integrity, and that you will govern their thoughts, never allow them to work in selfishness, but always allow them to work in service. We look to you, the very author and finisher of our faith, because you are the God who does absolutely everything well. Cover our city, curb the violence, stop the killing, and remove the spirit of death that has parked itself over our city. We look to you, and you alone. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and we appreciate you, Minister Erskine, for providing us with those prayers. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Council President Protem, Philman.
Good morning.
And Council President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you very much. At this time, the minutes are not ready for February 4th through May 31st, 2022. Good morning, Chief. Do we have any communications from the mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam President, members of Protem, members of the council, and members of the public. Today marks 30 days until the World Games comes to our city on July 7th through the 17th. That's one month until the World Games is here. If you haven't gotten your tickets, please do so right away. And as an added incentive, the World Games recently announced a limited-time offer of a $35 day pass. This allows ticket holders to attend any available game on the day of the pass. This, however, does not include opening and closing ceremonies. For more information, you can go to TWG2022.com for details. You can also go to birminghamal.gov/BHAMReady for important details for both residents and businesses regarding events and road closures. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/BHAMReady. Big congratulations to our home team, the Birmingham Stallions. They are currently the only USFL team with an undefeated record for this season. The Stallions will battle the Houston Gambler's at 5:00 PM on Saturday, June 11th, at Protective Stadium. So we encourage all of our citizens, let's go out and support it by packing out the stadium. You can get details at theUSFL.com. June is Pride Month, and a time when we, as a city, pay tribute to members of the LGBTQ+ plus community, many of whom are our residents, colleagues, family members, and friends. This week, on June 10th through 12th, we will light up City Hall in honor of Pride Month. We hope that it shines a bright light on the amazing contributions made to our city. The annual fishing rodeo will take place this Saturday at Eastlake Park from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Admission is free, and this is a family-friendly event. For more info, people may call 254-2391. Finally, Madam President, members of the council, members of the public, the city has a new radio show on V94.9. It's called The Magic City Spotlight. Every Saturday at 9:00 AM, the mayor will talk to our residents about events, programs, and initiatives, and also shine a light on the special people and organizations in our city. The mayor looks forward to having some great conversations and partnering with his historically black-owned, historic black-owned media organization. You can listen on the radio, you can listen on the radio at V94.9 FM. You can also download the V94.9 app and listen from your phone. Madam President, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you very much for those announcements and communications. At this time, Madam Clerk, do we have any announcement of boards and agency expirations?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Go ahead. Thank you.
First, we have the Design Review Committee. We have four people whose terms will expire July 30th, 2022. It's Craig Hoskins, who is a registered architect, Ben Weisman, who's a landscape architect, Richard Mock, he's member-at-large, and LeAnn McNally, who is a commercial revitalization. These are three-year terms, and they fall under the Planning and Zoning Committee. We also have the Land Bank Authority of the City of Birmingham, Director III, who is Bradley P. Green. His term expires July 15th, 2022. It's a four-year term, and this falls under the Public Improvement.
Thank you for those announcements. For any citizens that are interested in applying for these vacancies, you can find those also on our BirminghamCityCouncil-Residents website slash Boards and Agencies. You can find those on our page. Thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you read the items that are consented for consent?
Ma'am. Consent agenda begins on page two with item number one. Let me go over to page 13, items two and three. Page 14, items four and five. Page 15, items six, seven, and eight. Page 16, item nine. Page 17, item 10. Page 18, items 11 and 12. Page 19, item 13. Page 21, items 14, 15, and 16. Page 22, item 17. Page 24, items 18 and 19. Page 26, item 20. Page 27, items 21 and 22. Page 28, items 23 and 24. Page 29, item 25. Page 30, items 26, 27, and 28. Page 31, items 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33. Page 32, items 34, 36, 37, and 38. Please note that item number 35 was withdrawn at the request of Plating Engineering and Page 33, items 39, 40, 41, and 42. Item 43 has been withdrawn at the request of council staff. Page 34, items 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48. And that concludes the consent agenda, and we do have two addendum items.
Thank you very much, and we do have two addendum items. That's correct.
Ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Counselors, are there any items that you would like to have added or removed from the consent agenda? Mrs. Tate? You would like that item pulled from consent? All right. Thank you. That's item 42 on page 33. Any other items, counselors?
Yes, Ms. Clark?
Yes, item 50 is going to be added to consent.
The request is for items 50 and 51, which are an addendum to be added for consent. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation, and those are indicated with the "P," will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, can I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselors, I understand your tablets are down, so all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Hearing no opposers. All the items that are approved for consent, those have been approved. If you're here for an item that was indicated to be consented, that has been approved, and we welcome you to continue to join us for the rest of the meeting. First item.
Yes, ma'am. The first item will be on page 33, item number 42. The resolution accepting and approving the bid of Pronto Track Inc. coming Georgia for electronic monitoring devices, maintenance, and service as needed at the unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of three years for the Birmingham Municipal Court, this being the lowest, most responsive bid submitted meeting specifications, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
I move approval.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Tate, to answer this item, be removed from the consent. What questions did you have?
Some quick questions. As I was reading the resolution, I didn't see, you know, the cost of the monitoring fees and who's being placed, you know, on monitoring fees in Municipal Court.
So we have Judge on his way. Counselor Tate, these moves are a little bit slower these days. He's on his way to answer questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Move to table item 42.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Woods. We'll table that item until Judge Sparks gets here. The next item, counsel.
The next item. Next item is on page 34, item number 49. A resolution setting a public hearing on June 21st, 2022 to consider the adoption of an ordinance adjusting the maximum rates of fare for taxicabs in response to increased fuel costs.
I move approval.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Yes. So I just wanted to update the council on this. So a couple of times over the past two or three months, we've had representatives of the tax cab industry, specifically Z-Trip, come to us and talk about the burden that rising fuel costs have had on their drivers. Those are costs that are borne by the drivers. And so they have requested that we revisit the ordinance that sets the taxicab fare, and has specifically requested consideration of temporary surcharge to address the increased fuel costs. So this is what this is about. And on Monday, at the Transportation Committee meeting, we'll discuss it again, some of the possibilities of specific language that we may include in the ordinance.
Thank you. And is this specific to Z-Trip, or is this any taxi cab?
It would cover everyone.
Everyone? Thank you. I've been seeing Z-Trip around a lot lately, and I was wondering, was that some competition between Via On Demand, but that is just another taxi?
It's a regular taxicab service with a more updated user interface.
It looks, I see the van and everything, that it almost looks like Uber or Via On Demand. All right. Thank you. Counselors, any questions for our Transportation Chair? We appreciate you updating us on this and giving us what that public hearing will be about. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, we've had to do this before in the past because we, you know, the economy comes and it goes. So it isn't unusual, and I'm sure there's somebody who's as old as I am who can remember what we did before. At least one person, you know, who's still here in City Hall.
I would say, so I was gonna say those, well, I remember.
We have to have levity. We have to have levity.
That's right. Well, thank you. Counselors, so this vote would be setting a public hearing on June 21st. So we had a first and a second.
Well, you've already had.
And we've already done it. All right. Thank you. So we've set that public hearing for June 21st, 2022. Next item, I think we're still waiting on Judge Sparks.
Yes, ma'am, and that completes, there are no more junk items.
All right.
Other than that item.
Thank you. At this time, counselors, I really, we do have a long list of speakers. I'd hate to get started, and then we have to conclude that when the...
Motion to suspend the rules for the public speakers.
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would call the first speaker. And before we start, you have three minutes, and if you would please adhere to the three minutes, when I ask you, I'll let you know that your time is up, then we would like to go on to the next speaker. And so we'll call you up with your name, and if you'll state your name and address, and then we would entertain the discussion on your item. Thank you.
Our speaker is Camden Carmichael.
Good morning. And it's 10:32, 10:32, 20th Street South. So right there in Five Points. So my husband is the pharmacy manager at the Birmingham Apothecary in Five Point South, and daily, he is having to deal with the homeless population, whether it's coming in, stealing from the store, sexually harassing employees. Ooh, sorry, y'all, I am nervous.
It's okay.
Or a wild encounter, something happens daily. May 12th completely changed the way I feel about my husband working in Five Point South. A homeless woman came into the pharmacy to buy a cigar, and whenever she didn't have enough money to pay for it, she became a rat in the store. She was asked to leave, in which she exited the store only to return two minutes later with a two-by-four and nails glued to the end of it. Making numerous threats and swinging the board erratically, my husband triggered the silent alarm in the back of the pharmacy. This alarm goes directly to the police department and is used when the pharmacy is being robbed at gunpoint. My husband and the owner of the store had all the females go to the back of the pharmacy and call 911. The second alarm is triggered again as my husband and the owner of the store try to get the lady out while swinging the two-by-four. They were able to push her outside, and 40 minutes later, the Birmingham Police showed up. The way the police handled this entire situation was poor, from leaving the lady on the streets, and my husband having to walk all of his employees home because she was still outside taunting them, to the way they handled the police report. At this point, that is no longer my concern, though. Captain Roberts of the South Side Precinct, Chief of Deputy Patrol Ron Sellers, and Chief of Police Scott Thurman have made this wrong right. Since this incident, the first time in two years, my husband has come home happy. There's now police stationed in Five Point South, and just their presence alone has helped tremendously. But this is not sustainable. Everyone in this room knows there's a national police shortage. There are four police officers on duty at a time in the South Precinct. So yes, as of right now, there's a temporary solution, and the police presence has helped. But I don't feel safe, my husband walking, or my husband working down there. I don't feel safe walking down there, and if you ask the city of Birmingham if they feel safe in Five Points, they'll probably tell you no. What I'm here today is to ask the city to pass an ordinance where you are no longer allowed to congregate in front of these businesses. No matter if you're homeless or hardworking, if you're not waiting for a ride, waiting to be seated at one of the restaurants, you can't congregate on these sidewalks. Sitting in front of these businesses and camping out has foot traffic almost nonexistent because people are scared to come inside when there are people passed out in front of the business. If we can pass an ordinance at Five Points for it to be an open container entertainment district, we can help these businesses by passing an ordinance where people cannot congregate at the front of them. My husband was attacked at his job, a job in which he is a healthcare provider to help his community. I need to feel safe that he's protected while at work. If my husband had acted in self-defense and would have shot this lady with a two-by-four, what would that have done for my family? An investigation, him losing his pharmacy license, having to deal with mental consequences of a shooting, another human such as PTSD or anxiety, what would he even be the same when he came home to me after an incident like that? He deserves basic protection while serving this community. The police are doing everything they can with the amount of people that they have. We need to come together, work together as a team, and help the police with this matter. Because if they're so short-staffed that they can't respond in a timely manner and a time of need, the least the city of Birmingham can do is help protect these businesses by getting people off the sidewalks camped out in front of them. So I'm here today begging you to protect my husband, begging you to protect these employees in Five Point South, and begging you to protect the citizens so we feel safe going down there.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmichael. Counselor?
Ms. Carmichael, I want to thank you so much for coming and preparing a statement so thoughtfully. I think your concerns are right at the forefront of many Birmingham residents and stakeholders. So 100% with you. There's, you had a lot packed in there, and yeah, thank you so much for sharing those concerns. I feel like a lot of us up here on the council are right there with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor O'Quinn.
Just one thing.
Counselor O'Quinn?
For being nervous, you did an outstanding job. No, you're good. I just wanted to say, good job.
Counselor Tate?
Mrs. Carmichael, I applaud you for uplifting that, your bravery. As you stated, with the antique of rising of gun violence all across the country, this should not be a debatable discussion on the federal, state, city level. We should work hard to protect people and get measures into place to protect those that protect and serve as well, and making sure that people are safe. Because right now, people do feel like they're living in bondage, you know, in their homes. So I applaud you, and as my colleagues have said, we, this is on the forefront of our minds.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, how you doing? We actually met yesterday, and we talked about this. I am having a meeting tomorrow morning with the Five Point South Business District to talk about different things like that. So we are taking this as a complaint. I think we have to make sure that not only our residents feel safe, but our business owners feel safe as well. So we're working on it, and I'm sure I'll see your husband tomorrow morning. So I just want you to know that this is on the front of our minds, and I have talked to Mayor Woodson about it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, counselors, I do see that our chief of the Municipal Court has rolled in, so if you would allow us to, if I could entertain a motion where we could suspend the speakers' list, and we can go ahead and allow Judge Sparks to address the question. Spin move, is there a second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Good morning, Judge Sparks. How are you? We appreciate you coming over so quickly. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I rolled as fast as I could.
We do hope you're doing well. Thank you.
Judge, I just had a few questions. Basically, how long, you know, for the person that you guys put on EM, how long are they on EM, and what are the fees? Because I did, what I did see in the agreement on number three, that the individual has to pay the initial setup fee prior to being, you know, monitored. If you could just break down some stuff to me.
Now, we use these braces almost exclusively in our domestic violence situation, so that individuals, first of all, good morning.
Good morning.
Service Presiding Judge of Municipal Court. Try to use the Pronto Track contract so that people don't have to sit in jail, so that those confined to go home and still get along in their life as much as possible. But as you know, domestic violence cases are dangerous, so we need to keep much control of the situation as we can. And so to tell you the exact amount of time that they stay on the bracelet would be difficult in this situation. We try to remove them as quickly as possible because it's a pre-trial stance that we have them in. We don't typically use it in a post-trial situation. In terms of fees, if you're indigent, you don't pay anything. Indigent, you don't pay anything. If you do have a source of income, there may be some small fees, but we try to mitigate those.
Perfect. Answered my question.
Thank you very much. Counselor Tate, does that answer your questions regarding that item? All right. Thank you. So did we have a motion and a second? I believe we did.
We have a motion, but we can go ahead and make another one.
Okay. If we could... So we received another motion and a second for that item?
Yes, ma'am, we already have that. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No opposers, then that item passes. Thank you very much. And now we'll re-entertain our request to go ahead with the continuation of the speakers' list. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right.
The next person would be Sonya Hardy.
Right. And thank you, and I do notice, Madam Clerk, that we do have one, two, three, four, five speakers signed up to address the issue, and maybe some on the second page.
Thank you.
Okay. But two more. And so typically, what we do when we have this many speakers for one item, we do like to ask if you would be willing to group together. Would you like to have one speaker? And then you can have the five, five to six minutes. It's the pleasure of the group, since you're all here to address one item. Yes. Would you want to take two? Okay. Thank you. If you all would come to the podium and then just give us your name and address. If they would like, they don't all have to crowd around. If you'd like to, it's okay. If you all would like to come up as a group, that's fine as well. And you all are gonna have three speakers for the group, or two? Three? Okay. And then let's give them three minutes. Thank you all. We appreciate you coming here this morning. I see the group gathered, so this is a very important issue for you. So if you would, we'll give you three minutes apiece, but that'll give you an entire six minutes for the item, and if we need more, we'll be happy to give you more if you need it. Okay? Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Brian Rogers. I'm a living 9616. I'm coming.
I moved there, my family. Welcome by the Penfield Park Association. And to this day, that's who we know, that's who we've always known, that we protect on us. Just until recently, we found out that we were not a part of it.
There you go.
But every time we've asked questions, those motions were tabled. So I come before you today to ask you for your help, where we can change that boundary because it looks as if we're being divided. We are a subdivision of 54 homes, and out of those homes, just 14 of us. But you see our support here, and a lot of those members of that subdivision have been singled out to be a part of an association that we know nothing about. I first met them this past March. From what they're telling me, that we've been a part of the association for years. Nobody's ever knocked on my door besides Penfield Park. Pine Hill Vista, I found out they have a lot of things in that area. If we were a part of the association, I feel like they should have been talking with us. Like I said, every time we went to those meetings recently here, everything has been tabled. There's no answers being given to us, so we come here asking for your help to not divide us, but continue to let us be a part of the family that we know. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sonya Hardy, and I live at 9632 East Point Circle.
Ms. Hardy, if you'll pull that down just a little closer to your, thank you.
I built my house, first of all, East Point is a circle consisting of 54 houses and two vacant lots. When my house was built 21 years ago, it was Penfield Park Neighborhood Association that welcomed me into the neighborhood, gave me the garbage pickup days, emergency phone numbers, and invited me to their neighborhood association meetings. For nearly two decades, I faithfully attended the meetings, and I voted. For the last neighborhood officer election, I was informed that I could not vote because my house is in Pine Hill Vista neighborhood, not Penfield Park. Some of my neighbors have lived in East Point for over 30 years and did not know that 14 of the 54 houses in the circle are in Pine Hill Vista. But throughout the years, it's been Penfield Park that has represented all of East Point, and we do not want the circle broken. In the City of Birmingham's Citizens Participation Plan, the section on boundary changes states that the neighborhood, not one person, but the neighborhood that would receive the additional property, begins the process. This would be Penfield Park. If the neighborhood, not an individual, denies us, then it's over. But in December 2021, Penfield Park voted to accept us, and the paperwork was submitted to the Community Resource Officer. Prior to the vote in October 2021, 13 of the 14 houses signed a petition declaring that we do not want to be divided from the rest of our subdivision and have to advocate to two neighborhood associations. House Number 14 gave a verbal because he's away ill. Pine Hill Vista stated that the petition didn't count, and that we didn't attend their meetings and showed no interest, so no action was taken. The petition spoke for itself. At the March 2022 Pine Hill Vista meeting, a motion to reconsider the East Point boundary change was given and seconded, but we were not allowed to vote. The president tabled the motion until the next meeting to notify and involve more of Pine Hill Vista's neighborhood residents. The motion was tabled, but never seconded. We're small in number, and if we could have voted, we would have been outnumbered. We stand united today to ask for your help. We want to be with the rest of our subdivision in Penfield Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Wedgeworth. I reside at 9604 East Point Circle, Birmingham, Alabama 35217. I have lived in this neighborhood for over 31 years. When I first moved to the East Point neighborhood, I was welcomed to the community by Penfield Park, by a Penfield Park resident. He was Mr. Willie Biggs, the president of Penfield Park. Shortly after being welcomed by Mr. Biggs, then came Terrence Booker, Aldrich Gunn, and others. I learned that we, the East Point neighborhood, was a part of Penfield Park Association. Just recently, I learned that the 9600 block of East Point is no longer under the Penfield Park community. We are under the Pine Hill Vista community, due to the rezoning that happened 25 years ago. I was not aware of this. The 9600 block of East Point got rezoned under the Pine Hill Vista president for the possibility of adding an access road to connect the two neighborhoods. Hence, the Pine Hill Vista would have no other, I'm sorry, so that the Pine Hill Vista would have another exit out of their neighborhood. But the proposal was not approved. After that, the 9600 block of East Point then seemed to matter to Pine Hill Vista. From 25 years ago till now, myself as well as others, and the 9600 block of East Point remain under the assumption that we still was under the Penfield Park Association. It has been some mass confusion between the two neighborhoods over the last year. One of my neighbors from the 9600 block of East Point have been voting in the Penfield Park community for the past 20 years, but yet she's lived in East Point Circle for over 21 years. And was just told last year that she was to vote in the Pine Hill Vista community. How was that possible, since we were rezoned 25 years ago? I would just like to say that the East Point Circle subdivision has always been a whole circle subdivision, and we would like to stay as one. All 14 residents of the 9600 block of East Point have signed a petition to stay as one whole subdivision and not to be divided. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I am very appreciative of you presenting this to us today and the manner that you've done it, so that as a council or as administration, we may be able to help you. I know this, not only for me, it's a matter of you want to do business, and you want to be able to get issues solved, and that's what our neighborhood association process does. Counselor Moore, I just want to ask you if you want to speak to this, and then we're going to ask the administration for some assistance. But Counselor?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I just want to thank you all for coming down and, you know, presenting this in a very professional and, yeah, great way. I really do want to, just for the sake of clarity for everyone, you know, who is listening in, wanted to read the CP plan that is in place, just so that, you know, everybody is on the same page, so if y'all could bear with me. As far as boundary changes, a neighborhood that would receive additional property as a result of changes begins this process as follows. They vote at a neighborhood meeting to approve proposed changes to their neighborhood boundary. This is usually initiated by residents. If the receiving neighborhood approves the change, they will then go to the neighborhood that will be losing property and make a request that the neighborhood vote to give up the portion that is being requested. If either neighborhood declines to approve, then the request is denied. However, if this is agreed to be by, if this is agreed to by both neighborhoods, then a form describing the change is filled out and signed by both the receiving and the losing neighborhood. A copy of the neighborhood minutes from each neighborhood reflecting the changes is attached. Once the description is on file, then a copy should be forwarded to GIS Section of Planning and Engineering and Permits, so that the changes can be made to maps, et cetera. Read it for one of two reasons. One, so that, you know, everybody will be on the same page, but then also, number two, to show people the importance of being a part of your neighborhood association and being engaged in your neighborhood association. I would also ask, I'm not sure if the president for Pine Hill Vista is present here today? No? Got you. I would like to, you know, do a little bit, little bit of research, you know, to find out, you know, what the reasonings are as to, you know, why this wouldn't be approved. I've had an opportunity to walk in Penfield Park. I've walked around the circle. I've seen where, you know, Pine Hill Vista is really separated by a hill, and a hill and some, a big old ditch with trees and all kinds of stuff. And so there's not even an entrance pass for you all to walk from your portion of the neighborhood into Pine Hill Vista. So it definitely is some separation there, and I see where, you know, it would definitely be beneficial to have you all to be a part of the Penfield neighborhood. So I would just be interested in looking into, you know, what could be done to possibly meet you all in this agreement. So that's all I have, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. And Chief, I know this comes under some of the boundaries of the CAB, and so I just wondered, could the Office of the City Attorney or Administration provide us also? I know this, and we appreciate you, you all gave us some very good information that we could also follow, which was included in your packet from what Counselor Moore read. So I guess we just wanted to know, this is a CAB issue?
One of our attorneys has done some research and can compile some information.
Okay. Thank you. Of course, today, we don't have an answer for you as far as which direction to go. We want to gather more information. We'll utilize the information that we have from our Office of City Attorney. Of course, we see in here that there is a process for boundary changes, and once that's followed, our PEP could make that final, once that is agreed upon. But counselors, any other comments or questions? Because what I'd like to do, and I'll give you a chance, sir, what I'd like to do then is work with Counselor Moore, and then we could work with the OCA, and just to get that other information, so we can assist with this. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name's Eric Kennedy. I reside at 9617 East Point Circle, but also have properties in District Nine and in District Three. A large part of this is the fact that our procedural processes have not gone, haven't gone the way they're supposed to. So we did our portion and had the receiving neighborhood vote first. That other portion was done out of court, and we're not getting an opportunity to readdress that. Votes, we show up. They haven't communicated to us that there were votes going on. I've lived in East Point Circle since 2011, first home I bought when I got out of the Helped me, they welcomed me. I know some of the neighbors as well in Penfield Park. I would have gone a little farther and asked if East Point Circle would be its own neighborhood, but I don't think we're there quite yet. But the fact that we're not getting an opportunity to interact with the parliamentary procedure.
All right, thank you. Counselor Quinn?
On the subject of neighborhood associations, I think this is as good an opportunity as any to mention that in October, we'll be having neighborhood elections. So I don't know if qualifying has opened up yet, but please be advised that this is a year, elections are every two years, and this is a year that we're having neighborhood elections, and those will occur in October, and you can ask folks in community development about that.
Thank you. Again, we thank you all, and we will continue to work with the various departments as well as the CAB, just to provide you with some additional information as to how to proceed for your neighborhood. Mrs. Abbott, did you have?
Yeah, I just, I think I'm not turned on there.
Oh, you are.
My neighborhood did this, and we had a land swap between the Glen Iris neighborhood and the Five Point South neighborhood, but everyone was cordial, and it all worked out fine. The thing that I wanted to say is, of course, that those of you who are in the Pine Hill Vista neighborhood, but you thought you were in Penfield Park, well, if all of you attend the Pine Hill Vista neighborhood and vote, you can probably vote yourselves into Penfield Park because there are a goodly number of you, and unfortunately, our neighborhood meetings are sometimes not as well-attended as we wish they were. So you have power, you just have to all be there together, and it has to be on the agenda, which is maybe the difficulty here. But I'm sure that your council member can prevail.
So I think that was the problem in what they were stating. They haven't been allowed or given the opportunity to vote for that change. And so that was the, if I'm correct, that is the issue that they're here to address today, so.
Thank you. So again, we will work in those areas. Chief, are you listening, and we can get some assistance for them? Thank you all very much. Again, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and we will follow up. Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Bob Friedman.
My first time here since the induction of the new council. I can only wish you much success moving our city forward. Glad to hear that the mayor has a regular live call-in radio show coming up. That's a good thing. My name's Bob Friedman. I reside at 1623 12th Street South, Five Point South, and I'm rector of the Birmingham Black Radio Museum, an online archive that catalogs and chronicles the history of black radio in this city from the 1930s through the 1980s, before radio became, for want of a better description, corporate, in our opinion. We have been encouraged to figure out a way to sustain this archive as a permanent exhibit, and we have done so by partnership with the Carver Theater. We intend on having a permanent exhibit in the basement of the Carver Theater. We're very excited about that, and we've raised a lot of the money to make that happen. In 2019, during the bicentennial, Alabama Mosaic, which is a clearinghouse for not-for-profits that focus on social and cultural history in Alabama, held their convention in Montgomery. They had two speakers, someone from the Space and Rocket Center, and myself. And at that convention, I showed a two-minute video, which I brought for you to see as well, just to introduce what we're doing and to look forward to partnerships down the road as a body that can support our work at the Carver and its development, so.
If you'll go ahead and show the video, thank you.
Listen up. Radio is on the air. Black radio, 81 years in Birmingham, saluting the bicentennial of the state of Alabama. The Birmingham Black Radio Museum captures the history of black radio, from format to ownership, and archives through oral history and ephemera. The personalities and their activities delivering the news and making the news. It's 1938. It's William Blevins, the Blevins Aggregation, on the early WSGN 610 gospel broadcasts. The 1940s brings us Bob Umback and the Atomic Boogie Hour on WJLD 1400, race music and jazz. W. A. Clark, Deacon Richmond Davis, Truman Puckett, and the extraordinary Jefferson County acapella gospel quartets. The 1950s brings us Wiley Daniels, midnight mover groover Walter Anglin, and Eddie Castleberry, personality leaders on WEDR 1220. William and Erskine Fosh with gospel on WBCO 1450. Your Roberta Roland, Rabilia Pope, Honey Brown, and Laura Gary, women, cooking, and jazz. Sugar Daddy Dawkins and Johnny Jive, Bruce Payne, Willie McKinstry, and Shelley the Playboy Stewart, rock and roll. The engine slamming into civil rights with Paul Tall Paul White and Thin Man Maurice King on WNN 1320. All this before FM was really in the market, a mere fraction of the voices that carried the gospel and the rhythm and blues, as Fred and Martin and the community brought us from a mighty long way. The Birmingham Black Radio Museum, a community-based archive built by and for our community and beyond by folks who came up and came by proudly celebrating our state's bicentennial. beyond by folks who came up and came by proudly celebrating our state's bicentennial. In your contact with all of you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm hopeful that some of my colleagues remember some of those, um, people. Tall Paul Yawls, Shelley the Playboy, uh, Erskine Fosh. So very familiar voices, uh, on radio.
I know. And Tall Paul talked about a Wild West shootout all the time. I'm thinking, hmm, how familiar is that? But I do want to, um, you know, congratulate Bob, because I know he's been at this for a really long time. And, you know, reaching the milestone of having a home and a, a permanent location, if we can figure out how to, how to get people, like, of all abilities, access to the basement of the Carver, I think, um, I just want to say congratulations, Bob, because I, I didn't know if you would get here, but you did. You stuck with it.
I wanted to say that we've, uh, we've begun negotiating with, uh, a lift company.
Perfect.
We've got drawings from the city, and they've actually done specs on a lift to take, uh, folks, including chair, a chair, from the lobby to the basement. We're in the midst of trying to, and raise money for that as well. But yes, full accessible, uh, I mean, it would be a, a crime to have people who lived through that period and who could not negotiate those steps to see the people who were their heroes when they were children, for sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. And Mrs. Abbott, sorry.
I wanted to ask a question. Why, when we are renovating the Carver Theater, why are we not making it accessible in the process? Doesn't that seem odd that we wouldn't, that the basement would not be accessible to handicap people if you have a museum down there?
I can, I can.
I mean, I, I don't know that you can answer that question, but I guess I would be looking at the people who are handling the renovations of the building.
Let, let me share a little bit of background there. Uh, the A D A compliance was grandfathered in at a time when nothing was in the basement, uh, except a practice room and a set of bathrooms. Since there was a bathroom upstairs, there was not an argument there. Now there's going to be a jazz radio station, and there will be us as well. So, uh, during the, the, the time of the pandemic and a little bit before that too, we would have liked to have seen the, the elevator go to the basement when they rebuilt it, and it just did not happen. I won't get into all the details here, but it just didn't happen. So we were faced with, how do we resolve it? And we tried every which way to understand that, including knowing the soup, the, uh, the infrastructure below the current basement, uh, current elevator, to see if it was even possible to lower it to the basement. And we're told that it would endanger the foundation. So we had to find something, and best way to do it. But I share your, I certainly have shared it over and over again with lots of sleepless nights, um, why and where for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning, Ms. Bevel. If you give us your address, please. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Forty-three forty-six Third Avenue South.
Can everyone hear? Go ahead.
Okay. Forty-three forty-six Third Avenue South. And I'm here to ask the City Council for some help with the Mom and Pop Bar, which is located at forty-four eleven Third Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama, three-five-two-two-two. And the help that I need is with the noise level, the opening and closing times for the bar. Also, um, the property that they're utilizing across the street from the bar, which is, um, forty-three fifty Third Avenue South, forty-three fifty-two. Those properties were all zoned for single-family homes, but they're being utilized for parking lots, um, yard sales, um, just for whatever they deem necessary. And, um, last week I received a notice asking, um, letting us know that they're going to be doing a, uh, having a zoning meeting for, um, to remove a dumpster from one side of the street to the other side. And with the dumpster being removed, um, it shouldn't have been there in the first place because that's, uh, their, um, property is all for single-family homes. But, uh, um, they moved the dumpster from the Mom and Pop parking lot over to the single-family homes area where, um, it shouldn't be already. But what I'm asking you to do is to find out what time that bar opens and closes. Let us know what the property is supposed to be zoned for, uh, if it was already met. Uh, the Neighborhood Association met Doris Jones, I think her last name is Jones. We met and we voted not to use that property for anything other than single-family homes. But the people are still using it for parking lots, they're using it for yard sale, and they are using it for, uh, whatever they, they deem necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Bevel. And this is the Avondale, this is a Momma Pop Bar. Do you have an address for them? Or Counselor maybe?
It's, it's Mom's Basement. Mom's Basement.
Okay.
Forty-four eleven Third Avenue South.
Thank you, Mrs. Tate, who is over the Public Safety Committee. She's asking you some additional questions.
Okay.
What's the address again?
Forty-four eleven Third Avenue South.
Twenty-four eleven?
Forty-four.
Forty-four eleven?
Forty-four eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
And also the property that's right now that's across the street from there, I think they own that property also, but it's, um, supposed to be zoned for single-family homes. Right now, there are some storage containers there and something that looks like a big gas tank. And I took pictures of it so you can see what's sitting there, and there shouldn't be anything there. There were house, three homes there. Those homes were torn down over the weekend, and, um, I think without a permit, it's just what I think. But anyway, because it's always happening only the weekend. And the bar, we built a deck on the outside of it. At a permit or not, we don't know. But it's there. And, um, when we originally voted for that bar to open, they said that it would be up ten, twenty people there in the bar at a given time. Now it seems like it's two hundred to three hundred people there. And they spilled all out into the parking lot across the street, just everywhere. They blocked the fire hydrants, they had, um, the light, um, blew, the, the few transformer blew in front of our house. So because of so much going on. And we want to get some answers, especially about those containers that are sitting there now. We want them removed as soon as possible.
Contact my chief of staff to meet you in the hall to get this information, and then we'll, you'll follow back up with them.
And I did talk to Mike when he did, um, um, issue the, uh, single-family homes.
Okay. I'm gonna, uh, make some contact with my chief of staff to talk to you in the hall to get the rest of the information. Thank you.
This issue to us. Next speaker.
Adrianne Walker Smith.
Good morning, Ms. Smith. How are you? If you'll just give us your address, and then you have three minutes. Thank you. You got to speak.
Twenty-fourth Street.
Speaking to the mic for us, ma'am.
Girl eight, twenty-fourth Street North, three-five-two-zero-seven. President? Numbers? My name is Adrianne Walker Smith, and I am here today as a small business representing Airballs for Girls. I am a licensed partner for the World Games, which means I can use their logo. And I'm also a vendor. And I am so excited. I went to a meeting on June the nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and I took off running. I had eight streams of income surrounded around the World Games. I got my vision board, but as a small business owner, I have experienced many. I had to take a deep dive with my own process as a six sigma practitioner. And you know what I realized? When I would ask people to buy my shirt, I would ask people to buy my drawstring bag and my wristband. Don't even know what the World Games are. If you live in Birmingham, you need to know what the World Games are. If you work in Birmingham, have some type of connection to Birmingham, you need to know what the World Games are. It is a multi-international sport that's comprised of sports that are not contested by the Olympic Games. It's held every four years. The first one was in Santa Clara, California. The last one was in Poland. And guess what? The next one is in Birmingham, Alabama. And we, I want to be ready. When I say you, I don't mean the council. I've heard some other things about the World Games. People have put their mouth on the World Games and us. Today, get your mouth off the World Games. Talk it up. They've talked about the sports. I don't care if we won one sport, and it was ditch digging. We're gonna build the best ditches there are. And when they go back home, they're gonna say, ooh! I went to Birmingham, Alabama, and they can show them, build some ditches down there. That's what we want, okay? I, I don't work for the World Games, but guess what? I'm Birmingham. This is my city. Y'all that work me know it. But I need support. I cannot sell my items. I'm having a hard time. I have nice things. I work very hard. The city needs support. You have a business in Birmingham. If your headquarters is in Birmingham, you need to be a sponsor for the World Games. Your business is in Alabama, you need to be a sponsor. You need to volunteer. Everyone in the city of Birmingham and the state, you have something to offer, whether it's time, money, a skill set, support, volunteer, buy tickets, talk it up. That to the small businesses. As a small business owner, we have many, many challenges. When you support a small business, you're not paying for a mansion. You're not paying for an exotic vacation. You're paying for somebody's rent, paying someone's power bill so they can heat up their stove to prepare a mo- a, to prepare a meal, or work their T-shirt machine. You're paying for gas money so they can make it to the next city. It's real over here as a small business. So what I'm, and again, they don't, the small, they don't need support. They just, they don't need money. They need support. Buy their items. So as a vendor from this day forward, I'm asking that the city of Birmingham support us. I've connected with fifty vendors from all over the United States. I've spent seven thousand, eight thousand, fifteen thousand. They are not made of diamonds. I want them to have a positive experience. They go back. I want them to continue to support us. I also want us to support them. Let them know that we are welcome that they chose Birmingham. They travel all over, but they came to us so we can have a positive experience.
Ms. Smith, you're getting near your time.
All right.
It's okay.
I'm done. I would like for the city to do something, to just support them, support the vendors.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your appearance here this morning and your plea to remind the citizens of Birmingham that this is us. This is, these are our games, not just the World Games. And I'm also appreciative of the small businesses that are, um, being a part of this process. And so I too am asking all residents and the city and other businesses, let's do what we can to make this a huge success. I know Counselor Woods indicated he wanted a comment, so I appreciate your coming to us this morning. Counselor Woods?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I was interested in what, uh, what all products you're, you're making and the name of your small business and.
Airballs for Girls.
How people can find you.
You can go to airballsforgirls.net. This is my shirt. I also have the drawstring bag. I also have the wristband. And I have exclusivity. I'm the only one in the whole wide world that can do this wristband. I have tutus, I have bows, I also have exclusivity on that. But not, it's not only me. We have other vendors. It's not about me. I want everybody to win.
Thank you.
Everybody.
I wonder, uh, I guess something we can check into, but if there is a, um, a, a website or something where all the vendors' products are hailed or anything like that?
And we can go to T W G twenty-twenty-two, and we'll go back and look and see how they're, um, marketing that and what we could do to help. But, um, I know they do have, uh, the, the website that does include a lot of information about volunteers and different opportunities that are out there. So that is something we'll, we'll definitely look at, and then we'll get that word out there. And perhaps through our own pages, Counselors, we can help to distribute that information. Any other Counselors? Again, we thank you so much this morning. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Morning, Mr. Trone. How are you?
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Excellent to see everyone this morning. Uh, my name is Atlee Trone. Atlee Marcel Trone for clarifications. I reside at twenty-seven forty-one Twentieth Place, instantly in the Fayetteville neighborhood, where I have the privilege of serving as the neighborhood president. Um, I come before you today with, uh, not-so-great news. Actually have a problem, uh, that we need to, uh, get fixed or addressed. And I'm actually here today for more or less, I'd say, advice and solutions, uh, versus, uh, hammering down on the problem. With so many wonderful things going on in Birmingham, it's great. It's a beautiful city. We had a great weekend this past weekend, uh, absolutely great things, uh, that are coming before us as well. Um, however, uh, in Fayetteville, we got a, an environmental problem, and I think it's something that you all see in various neighborhoods in your district. And, uh, we have a dumping problem that's extremely bad. I have to come here today to vocalize this complaint, um, because, um, it's just, it's, it's getting out of hand. Our last pickup day was May the eighteenth, and, uh, for whatever reason, uh, the services are diminishing. They're picking up less and less and less. Um, to speak for, our next pickup day is June the twenty-ninth. So when they pick up half of this bulk trash material dumping, whatever it may be, um, it tends to stay there, and it builds, and it multiplies, and it manifests. And, um, I can speak to several different issues. The month of May, we had thirteen three-one-one calls just addressing certain issues, uh, Counselor. And, uh, and I highlight one, um, twenty-eight eleven Twentieth Street. Um, it's been there. The complaint has been in the system over sixty-four days. But we know that it's been communicated by various different calls. And, uh, I'll give you the call reference number. It's twelve twelve nine zero nine five. And again, that's at twenty-eight eleven Twentieth Street. And it's a large amount of stuff. Um, I'll say about a month ago, I actually addressed a group of individuals that was on the pile. I guess they were searching for scrap metal. And, um, it's to the degree, when you, when you, when you speak to someone, they have weapons, they have things that they like to show, and I had to take a step back, introduce myself, and let them know my purpose. And it was not to, not to stop them or not to interfere with their business, but when you go through this and you did for scrap, put it back so that when the city does come, uh, it could get picked up. Um, I have a couple of solutions. Um, I've already, and first of all, I'd like to thank all the individuals that we communicate with daily, as well as individuals from public works that attend our neighborhood meeting. Uh, Alex Gordon, uh, Andre Watkins. We've already been proactive to schedule a ride-through through the neighborhood next week. Um, I'm gonna request that a special pickup for our neighborhood is scheduled as soon as possible, um, because, I mean, this stuff is in the alleyways. I can go on and on with addresses. It may be best to email someone with them. Um, I'll start twenty-five fourteen, twenty-sixth Street, um, in the alleyway. We actually vocalized this complaint right before Easter. It's still there, between twenty-fifth Street and twenty-sixth Street in the alleyway. Uh, twenty-first Street and Fifth Avenue, it's an ongoing complaint that we have. It's in the alleyway of twenty-first Street where it looks, it appears to be a street, but it almost looks like an alley as well. But it's probably about, you can feel about three to four pickup trucks just because of neglecting the pickups in the past. It is built. So again, um, I can reiterate, and I can go on and on. Um, the only thing that I know that we can do as neighborhood officers is we encourage the residents to call three-one-one. And other than that, I, I'm, I'm kinda hopeless. I don't know what to tell them. Um, it's been time for, we've tried to, uh, man up and go and get stuff ourselves, but it's way too much. but it's way too much debris and trash for us to handle.
Thank you, Mr. Trone. I appreciate you for bringing this to us. I really feel that you're, you're talking to nine choir members right here. We are definitely, uh, on board with you. Each of our offices receive this type of information. I did have an opportunity though. I was, um, included in a presentation for my neighborhood presidents on Friday, where we did have the Department of Public Works Director. We had, um, Code Enforcement Director, and we actually had the Code Enforcer who's over all the code enforcers for our area. You've brought about a multitude of, um, situations that I think we all involve. Um, open alleys, closed alleys, um, bulk trash pickup. People, how they place that bulk trash for pickup. And like you're giving us another scenario now, people going through that trash, picking up what they want out of there, and then it's still a terrible mess. So I think we all can agree with you that, um, this is a situation that we all deal with now. Now that we've all agreed with that, what do we do next as a solution? And, um, so I know that Chief, if you could, um, commit to getting those, um, addresses and then give us an update on, uh, what we feel like we could do with this.
So, a few things. Thank you, Madam President, and we certainly look forward to a follow-up with all of the councilors on how we address this issue that's affecting our city. Thank you, Mr. Trone. Thank you for sharing the addresses. We've, um, taken note of those and will certainly be doing an investigation. And I'd ask this of you and all of our citizens, please don't become hopeless. Um, while this is a challenge, we do have, um, an aggressive plan that we're working on to address this matter. It's not just limited to our city, um, that the mayor will be bringing forth soon that residents and all of our business owners, everybody who either lives, works, plays in our city can grab hold to so we can address this issue. So don't be hopeless. We need you to remain vigilant. And we'll look forward to coming back to, to the council and to the citizens with a plan on how we get caught up. But we did take note of those addresses, Mr. Trone.
Yes, sir. And one thing I wanna request, um, can we get at a minimum 25 of these? Um, they're, they're difficult to get. I don't know how, I don't know who's the middleman. I don't know who's the top man. And I don't know where to start. But I, I wanna request 25 of these because they've been requested from our residents in Fairview. And ideally, it won't solve the problem, but it'll, it'll help in terms of putting these signs in places where they just continue to dump. And maybe not one sign, but multiple signs coming in the alley as well as, as it gets in the alleyway. But I do have a request for 25 of these signs at a minimum, hopefully before the end of the month or before our next neighborhood meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Trone.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll follow up with you on number placement because we don't want it to just be window dressing. We want it to be effective. So we'll follow up with you on the best way to address the concern. So we'll follow up with you on that. Have you spoken, have you spoken to our dummy campaign point persons? Ms. Alice Williams, Ms. Alicia Lumpkin, have you spoken with them?
Uh, yes.
We'll follow up. We'll follow up.
To the degree that we're speaking of, we've offered solutions and we've had discussions. But again, the problem is way beyond, it, it, it needs action.
We'll follow up.
And we'll follow up. Thank you, Mr. Trone.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Did you wanna say something, Councilor Woods? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Councilor Moore, uh, thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna say, um, as much as I love, you know, our signs, I gotta be honest with you. I don't know how effective they are to Chief's point, um, only because, like, I've seen where in certain areas, people have dumped right on top of those signs. And so I don't want us to, you know, waste our time, you know, putting those out. I would much rather us find some more, you know, concrete solutions. Um, I understand the, the reasoning behind wanting to have them. Uh, but I think we're at a point now where we need some more, uh, concrete solutions, um, than that.
And as well as that, and if I could speak to that?
But no.
Councilor Moore, no.
Go, go ahead if, if you could make a brief.
No, I, I, nah, it's, it's.
Because I, I really feel we're on the same page with you. And it's really something that I agree with Councilor Moore. I put one up right around the corner from me. And, um, the guy that I thought was doing the dumping, you know what he did? He threw stuff right on top of the sign. So I go over there and I pick up the sign and I put it, put it down in the ground again. So sometimes the signs don't, they don't deter it. I really think we're at the next step when we really need a program that, um, not only is an enforcement, but also an education program. And I don't know if that's what you were gonna speak to as well.
I wasn't, but I will say, uh, President, um, as a neighborhood officer, we serve endless efforts and we don't get compensated. So when we even come down to speak before the council, I would advise that we table or at least allow more minutes for individuals to speak when they have complaints. Because we see so much, we know so much, and we do this not from a compensation standpoint, but we serve from the bottom of our hearts. And when we're limited time here, it's, it's an ongoing problem where it creates the hopelessness. It's like, why do we?
I agree with that, but here's what I want to also suggest. We also have other mechanisms and avenues that we can really get to the people that can really help to solve the problem. We have the monthly CAB meeting. We also have, um, most of us attend, if we don't attend, we have representatives at those neighborhood meetings. Sometimes just this, this type of conversation during our business meeting, during the council business meeting, is not, does not allow you the opportunity to really have the conversation with us and get in front of the right people from administration and other areas that could really solve the problem. So just by having this conversation, introducing it to us, our pledge is to go out and then continue to work with you. So, um, and then that way we can make it really worthwhile, your time, versus when you introduce it to us, we take the commitment to go and follow up. And so if we don't follow up, then that, that it does lie with us. But I appreciate what you're, what you're referencing as far as having enough time. But I really just believe in that time being quality time. But thank you so much. And Ms. Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to say hello and thank you for coming and advocating for Fairview. And, uh, I wanted to warn Chief Sparks that having 25 signs by the next meeting, that meeting's tonight, so you must mean the next meeting.
Oh, I meant the next.
Next Monday.
Okay. But, um, I, you know, I share your concern for the issues. And, you know, we've ridden and you've taken me through some of these alleys to see firsthand. And I would imagine some of, some of the debris that we saw is still there because it's hard to get to, uh, without going onto private property, to get in the unpaved, unproved alley portions. I, I'm just remembering one situation where we couldn't even get there 'cause it was like trucks and vehicles blocking where the debris was. So, um, you know, I'm still interested in advocating with you and for you and the neighborhood to get some of these things addressed. And, you know, it's a beautiful area, but it's, it's, um, it's pretty distressed in parts and we just gotta stay on it. And so thank you for bringing it, you know, escalating it because it's longstanding. And, um, you know, if I can help and the people in my office, they'll track some of the, they'll run down some of these tracking numbers too and just, you know, try to keep the pressure on and keep it escalated, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And I do wanna say, we don't wanna throw this off to other, we do have committees within the council. When we talk about the Administration Committee, we can go back and look at our ordinance or what, um, how we govern the speakers list and the time that's given for speakers. We have the Public Improvement Committee. And we also have various committees that will be working with you to, um, solve this problem. Councilor Proten.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I don't want you to think your voice is limited in our council meeting because you have to think about it. Your neighborhood meeting is, you know, like our council meeting. I was told my office, "Oh, you guys have three minutes to speak." And I was like, "Oh, we need more than three minutes," but that's their rules. So we have to understand that. And there are also different ways. You guys can always talk to us one-on-one too. So I don't want you to feel like just because you have three minutes of public, you can't talk to us at all because that's not the truth. But illegal dumping, um, it really grinds my nerves. So we right here. Uh, so we have new pickup trucks to help with bulk trash that are on the way. And that'll make it a lot easier for them to pick up their bulk trash. So there is some hope. Um, do you have the locations for your no dumping signs already?
Yes, primarily they're in the areas that are dumping right now.
Okay, and you turn in the 311? The, the locations with the pickup, with the no dump, okay. Um, can you email that to me?
No problem. We can get it organized. We have photos as well, timestamps. Um, we can, we can, we definitely can make it where, I didn't throw 25 out there as a random number.
Oh, no, no, I believe you. It's just gonna take some time for them to put the no dumping signs 'cause usually they have to take them off, uh, 'cause usually a Public Works employee that has to put it out. So just give them a little bit of time to put all 25 signs down. Um, they did, the mayor talked to us at our last retreat about cameras, talking to each community about putting some up as a long-term solution. So I don't know, um, Alice Williams is somewhere, but that is something that's gonna help long-term. I do think the signs, just be more positive, do kinda help. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. I have seen areas where we put up a sign and it has gotten better. But I do wanna thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. Thank you for what you do as a neighborhood officer 'cause a lot of times we see people complain about things and not come to us forthcoming about your complaint. So I really do appreciate that. But still work with us. Let us know. Um, 'cause we need to figure out this illegal dumping. Uh, and I really want us to do a cleanliness campaign because it has to be an education piece to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trone. Appreciate it.
And thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Morning, Mr. Sheffield. If you give us your address and you have three minutes.
Yes, good morning.
Thank you.
Uh, I live at 709 Penthouse Drive in Glen Iris. My question is in general about the rising cost of rent. When I began renting, I had to prove that my monthly income was three times the cost of the apartment that I was renting. Since then, we have seen inflation increase more than 8% and rent prices increase here in Birmingham and across the country 50 to sometimes 100%. Most working people in this community have not seen their annual wages increased by the rate of inflation, let alone 100% like we're seeing rent prices increase. This begs the question, why was it important for me to prove my monthly income was three times the rental amount in the past, but was not a factor considered when raising rent prices? This has created a situation that is effectively pricing out citizens out of the community. My question is, what can the city council do? And what is the city council doing to mitigate, mitigate the disproportionate increase in rental prices that do not align with the rate, wage increases in, in the city? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilors, have any questions? Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention. We've, I, I know I've written myself about the increase of rent all across the United States. So it is something that, um, plagues us as a community. Thank you. Councilor Quinn.
I mean, uh, one, one of the things that, uh, the city is definitely doing and doing better than pretty much any other municipality in the state of Alabama is our Emergency Rental Assistance, um, Program. And in fact, we are doing so well with it that, um, and, you know, in many places in, in the state, um, actually refused, uh, to accept those, that funding from the federal government. Um, so Birmingham was happy to take it. So we got, recently got an additional $6.6 million in emergency rental assistance funding. Um, and, you know, one thing, uh, that, you know, the administration especially deserves credit for is, is having such an effective program and, and getting those dollars out into the people, uh, that need them. And so, um, I understand, you know, exactly your point. And, uh, it's, it is a conundrum. And, um, you know, gentrification and displacement is definitely something that is a frequent topic of conversation for all of us. Um, when, you know, we're talking to residents, especially in the context of, of their neighborhoods. Um, and, you know, it's, uh, I can't say that we have any, you know, concrete solutions. Um, but it's definitely something that's, you know, at the forefront of, uh, a lot of our discussions.
Thank you. Well, as Chief.
Yeah, so those are federal funds that were allocated. So it just depends on if there's another allocation by the federal government. But it was done, um, simultaneously with the coronavirus. So if there's a reallocation, it'll happen again. If not, it's really up to the feds.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Good morning, Mr. Ramos. If you give us your address and we have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Let's speak in the mic, please.
My address is 1537 West Smithville Lane. I'm here today to speak on my street. I continue, we started having problems with our street. Coming in, it got patched. In 2020, we had more problems. And I called and I have pictures. I can leave them to you all. The citizens, some people out, nothing happened. 2021, street got worse. People came out, nothing happened. Uh, and also in 2021, uh, my councilperson, Ms. Tate, she came out. She's looking, she's saying how bad it is. And 2022, this year, Mr. Hatchet has been out there and Mr. McCray. But our street is, uh, is unbearable now. If you take, if you come down on West Smithville Drive, take a right on West Smithville Lane, when you turn right, you're supposed to be on the right side of the road. Okay, you can go up that street, but if someone is coming down, you got to stop and wait. It's unpassable on the left-hand side. There's a big hole there in, in front, across from my house. And the small sinkhole, now the hole is, has opened up so big to under the street. You can see up under the street now. Also, since then, uh, when it rained, we have water pools in the center of the street. You can't pass on the left. You can't come down on the left-hand side. You have to drive on the left-hand side, coming down and drive if you're going up on the right, on the left, on the right-hand side, coming down on, let me get it right. If you come down on the right-hand side, you got to wait at the corner till those people come down so you can go up on the right-hand side. Between my house, it's a big hole there. The hole started out being small. People came out, like I said, I have pictures. I'm gonna leave from the city. The hole was small. When Councilor Tate came out, the hole has not gotten, hadn't, hadn't gotten that big, but now it's extremely large. And now my husband, I have pictures for this year. He's had the ditch to Trent, Trent in my yard. Today the water ran out down on the side of my yard because the water's in my neighbor backyard to my right and it comes across. So we have problems with the ditch. We have problems on both sides of the street. Our street is not dry at all. So I'm here today to appeal to the council, to the council people to ask you all, is there any way possibly y'all can get somebody out there? This isn't an emergency. We have several holes in the center of the street now.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos, for bringing this to our attention. Uh, Chief Sparks will be able to assist and has a comment.
Yes, ma'am. So thank you, Mr. Ramos. Just want you to know, Councilor Tate has submitted this item to us. And we have three departments. For the council's information, it's not a surface-level fix. Um, so we have the Department of Transportation, the Department of, uh, Planning, Engineering, and Permits, and our Community Development Department. But Mr. James Fowler is waiting right out in the lobby to provide you with updates. Um, but just know, it's been raised to us by your councilor. It's been raised to us by several staff members that were on it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam President.
Ms. Ramos.
Mr. Ramos, good morning. Hey, I just want you to know that since I came, you know, to your house, we have been working nonstop, you know, to get this issue resolved. And, uh, Chief says, it's just so many, you know, departments that have to play their role in this. And I've seen it and definitely don't want your street to sink or your house, you know, to go, you know, under. And so, um, we gonna get it resolved. Yes, ma'am.
That hole now, it's about this big. I'm gonna leave my picture.
Okay.
If you come out to the house and go across the street and, you can see under the street now.
It's getting worse.
And the crack has gotten longer. So I just need somebody, I need you all to get us some help.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk? All right, at this time, councilors, we'll entertain your comments. And we'll start with you, Council clerk.
Thank you, Madam President.
Morning.
Well, neighborhood meetings, uh, the Fairview neighborhood will meet this evening at 5:30 via conference call. And the Thomas neighborhood will also meet this evening in person at Mount Hebron Baptist Church, Thomas. And on Thursday, the Central Park neighborhood will meet via conference call at 6:00 PM. And if you'd like information regarding the conference call numbers and codes, please call my office at 205-254-2304. call my office at 205-254-2304. This past Saturday, Councilor Tate and I teamed up with the, with Enslie Community President George McCall, the True Love Church of Enslie, Black Warrior Riverkeeper, and Birmingham's Municipal Court to tackle the interstate gateways into the Enslie community. It was a beautiful day for cleanup, and special thanks to the Man Up Ministry at True Love. They were out in force together, uh, really early, and, um, together we were able to remove more than 400 pounds of trash from exits 119B and 120 on I-5920. And we're also grateful to the True Love Church of Enslie for putting their faith into practice and being good stewards of God's creation, and for feeding us breakfast and lunch. Um, I'm not gonna steal, uh, Hunter Williams' thunder, so, but, you know, be up early Saturday and be at Eastlake Park at eight, eight o'clock. Um, the Five Points West Community Fund Day that was scheduled for this Saturday, June 11th, uh, there's a meeting going on right now that may be, and I'm saying may be, postponing it, uh, due to weather concerns. But if you'd like to get, uh, stay in touch with the latest status of this event, uh, you can contact Andre Watson, the Community Resources, uh, person for the Five Points West Community. His, um, he can be reached at 205-873-1158. So they're determining right now whether this event will, will continue, will happen or be postponed. Uh, congratulations to the Birmingham Parks and Rec, uh, Legion, Legion Field Crew for a wonderful weekend. Uh, Legion Field played host to the USFL this past weekend, where the Birmingham Stallions continue their winning streak, as the mayor's report, uh, aptly pointed out. And the field looked really awesome, and we're happy, we were happy to have the USFL and their fans in the Greymont neighborhood this weekend. And finally, y'all, the World Games is upon us. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clark. Councilor Quinn.
Yes. Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Um, apologies to Mr., Mr. Daniel Greer. Um, we had made arrangements for you to come and speak this morning about Magic City Fashion Week, so if you would, please, uh, come forward and make your presentation.
Thank you. We do apologize for that mix-up. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilor Quinn.
Yes. Morning. Just, and just remember to speak directly into the mic, it's, doesn't pick up very well.
The members of the team who could actually have make, make it with us today, we have grown. We're in year five, so very happy to come here. And we've been here since 2017, pitching Magic City Fashion Week. We're now in season four. We've made it, uh, past the pandemic, came back stronger than ever with some great sponsors like the Birmingham Museum of Art, um, Mercedes-Benz. Councilor Quinn has been very supportive, and we appreciate that. Um, but basically, we're here to share about this amazing program. We have got the attention of the Council of Fashion Designers of America. They have, um, invited us to be one of their regional fashion weeks, that we can continue to, you know, evolve and have designers in opportunities that they deserve. Um, I've grown my career as a fashion designer from Birmingham. I'm now, uh, I have an international following, and I have celebrities that I support, and I've grown my business that way. But, um, I have my son here, there's Joy, there's other college students, there's models here who, um, I believe that they have a creative community, they can, we have a creative community here that we can continue to build and evolve, and we just need the support of you all and the city of Birmingham, the mayor and everyone, to continue to elevate, you know, our program and our footprint of what we're doing. Um, we have a great support system in the community at large. Like I said, the summit is supporting us, we have the posits that's supporting us. Um, but it's really important that we have, uh, like, this, uh, be a public-purposed event, where there can be a line item, so we can continue to grow. Um, the Birmingham Times right now has featured six of our emerging designers. I mean, uh, some of these people, they're already designing people across the world. One of our contestants, she's already been all over national television, she's won, like, Celebrity Big Brother and all of that. So if we have people that are moving from LA and all these places, we need to continue to evolve this program. We had a fashion week years ago, and it expired, because, well, so many reasons, I won't focus on that. But we have a program where we're highlighting the community, it's very diverse, we have an extremely diverse team. We're showing, um, an Indian designer even at the museum this, uh, this week. So I started all this, and I didn't even tell y'all the date, so I definitely would love for y'all to, um, support us, June 9th through 12th. I should've said that first. But, um, we'll be at the museum, June 9th and 10th, um, for our main fashion shows. We've also been invited to the posits, where everybody, all of the designers who are competing, they, um, are allowing us to have a space there, where we can pop up and, um, showcase our, our clothes and everything, because the about what situation, um, that we were working on didn't pan out. But thankfully, the posits is stepping in to do that, and they're promoting it for us. We actually have our clothes in all the windows right now, which is really cool, considering my grandmother used to shop there years ago, and now see her grandson with clothes in the window, that's pretty, pretty dope. And also have a 13-year-old son here, who's, uh, going to film camps and all these things and producing videos and stuff, so, though I can go to Atlanta, have a career, Keisha lives in Texas, she can go there and do her thing, but we have such a great cast here in Birmingham. And when I'm walking around Atlanta and LA, I'm meeting people from here that thought they had to move, well, probably did at the time, had to move to, um, expand their careers. And I just, like I've spoken with Councilor Quinn, Ms. Tate, and a few of you already, even Camilla Sparks, um, I expressed to y'all that we have an opportunity here in the city that Atlanta doesn't have, Nashville doesn't have. We're building a sustainable fashion week that's gonna happen, and there's no shade to y'all, it's gonna happen regardless, because I'm five years in now, and this thing gonna happen, period. But I definitely want you all's support, because we can't do this alone. And, um, I do find great encouragement, these people travel from far and wide to do what they're doing. They're, like, we're up all night, um, making sure that these shows are gonna be a success. And let me also say, we have a member of two of the greatest icons in the world coming to, um, pour into this program. There's a member of Madonna, I know everybody in here know who Madonna is, a member of her team is coming. Um, a great friend of mine, Ty Hunter, who's a member of Beyonce's team, waves since the day of the Destiny's Child. Um, he's also coming to host that show again, to pour back into those emerging designers that he met five years ago, and, and it'll be great for him to see some of these people, where they've, you know, where they've grown, where they are now. And it's just so important that, I mean, we can do this from anywhere in the world, we have our phone, we can put our brands out, but we really, um, have an opportunity to shine. I tell them all the time, Birmingham was known for having a thriving iron industry, and that's where it got the name of the Magic City. Well, the new one is gonna be for fashion, and I can assure you all of that. It's gonna happen. So is there anybody else who'd like to say something? At least my day ones, who've been here since 2017. Keisha's been coming here since 2017 with me to, you know, pitch this program, and we're still here doing it, so you gotta say something.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I'm gonna read a little bit. Um, we're just here, like he was saying a few years ago, um, addressing the council, oh, yeah, yeah, well, addressing the council and introducing you guys to Magic City Fashion Week. As the faces have changed on the council, our message, my message, has not changed. Um, it is pivotal that our city takes a vested interest in the creatives in and around Magic City Fashion Week. I am a product of the Birmingham City School System. I attended elementary school in Lincoln Elementary in Smithville, and I also graduated from Western High School. So I, my ties to the city is very long and deep. My children attended Birmingham City Schools as well. My daughter attends University of Alabama at Birmingham. I have another daughter at A&amp;M, and my son went to Jefferson State Community College, so, um, our ties are very long. Um, I built my business here in Birmingham, and I'm proud to, you know, going into my 10th year. My job is creativity, and it was built here in my hometown. I now have dual residency, as you said, in San Antonio, Texas, but my commitment to the creatives in my hometown of Birmingham will never waver. I make it my due diligence to come home and continue to foster the future of fashion and creativity in Birmingham. I will never give up, I will always come back. Magic City Fashion Week is needed, and we need our city's support. It is in my hopes that with our visit today, the council takes into account the benefits of supporting Magic City Fashion Week and all the entities involved in this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Quinn, for presenting this group to us. I just wanna ask, before you speak, uh, June 9th through 12th, what are the hours? Any particular hours?
So June 9th, you start at 5:00 here at the museum. Um, June 10th, you start at 5:00 at the museum. June 11th, that event, it starts at 12, it ends at 4. We'll then run over to Lakeview to support Pride and Parade at 8:00 PM, and then on Saturday and then Sunday, we're all day at, uh, Ben Hart, the Pride and Justice and the Week collaboration there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilor Quinn.
Yeah, I, Daniel, I wanna thank you for your persistence in making Fashion Week, uh, happen year after year, and, um, you know, beyond that, just, you know, being a, a point person for the fashion community and helping to, to rally that community together, I mean, um, you know, there's, there's strength in numbers, and, and when you're, um, you know, part of a, a small group for, in Birmingham, you know, you, you definitely have to lean on each other, and I think you've been at the, at the center of the group, and, um, you, you know, I just wanna point out to my colleagues that, you know, you have a, a big vision, and this is, um, you know, not just, uh, about, um, you know, the art, but it's about economic development for the city of Birmingham and, and turning, uh, Magic City Fashion Week, getting it integrated into the National Fashion Week organization and, and, um, elevating the local organization to a level that, um, you guys can become a member of that national organization and bring in the support from the national group. So it, it's a, you know, it is big picture, it's not just about, you know, the local community and, uh, arts and culture, and, um, you know, there, there's, there's a bigger vision here, and something that, uh, uh, I think, you know, makes sense for Birmingham, you know, being, uh, the largest metropolitan statistical area in, in this, in the state, and a, a longtime center for arts and culture, uh, in Alabama. So, you know, thank, thank you again for the work that you're doing. Um, I did wanna ask, is recycled runway still part of the event?
So that's a great point, because when you think about building an infrastructure surrounding something, we don't have the most fabric stores and all that here, so being intentional, we have thrift stores everywhere. So that competition is a sustainable competition, I'm so glad you asked. My collection is totally recycled, um, I thrifted, much like this jacket, my jeans, and I have recycled all this denim, and we continue to wear it and, uh, create less waste for the environment. Um, we all are doing that, and what we said was, why aren't these fashion weeks sustainable then? We need to make sure all our businesses are coming back, and that we have, um, classes, like, we partnered also with the Birmingham Business Resource Center to provide financial literacy to designers, like myself, who need to know how to monetize our businesses and grow them out, and do all these things under our business name, under our LLCs. And that was ve- very instrumental, because Fashion Week is now a nonprofit 501(c)(3). So that went into effect, um, early April, and that is, uh, specifically to grow out this infrastructure, but we're gonna start doing that first by, um, using, utilizing thrift stores and things that are already made, we don't need to produce new clothes and, and waste into the environment. So once we teach people how to add value to the wardrobe that they already have, and to value the, the million, well, there's not a million, but there's a ton of thrift stores from all over the city. So we're gonna use that first, and then, like, in the next five years, with this grand plan and vision that I have, um, when we have, uh, designers and things who are having fabric stores in our building, um, then we'll be able to, by season 10 is the goal, we'll have our own fabric stores that people can use those fabrics and things like that, and like, I'm a textile artist, that would be another, a lane of income for me, to be able to create these fabrics that I can sell in that way, and we'd be sustainable in that way. But we have taken a lot of time to talk with the Council of Fashion Designers of America, and I didn't really tell what that would do, because we've already been invited, it's already happening. Um, they're planning to come here in August, they wanna speak with you all, as well, as to how we can continue to, you know, evolve, and it's gonna take a connection with Nashville Fashion Week, Atlanta Fashion Week, and all these places, that I have those connections already. And we're just gonna have to get together, and I feel like, once that happens, the South is gonna blow, probably bigger than New York Fashion Week, but it's gonna take us collectively seeing that goal, and I feel like doing it in a sustainable way, to where we're taking things and adding value to it, is gonna be something that's gonna set us way apart of things that other people are doing. Most other places, like New York, no shade to them, but they always think, let's take these, these really expensive fabrics and then make all these things. Well, I think it's so cool that we have all these amazing designers, nine of them, on Friday, who will be taking things that they've, some of them will take things they've made 10 years ago and, and catch us up to where they are now, but they're gonna show these judges how we're taking things, again, and in a sustainable way, and adding value to the environment and not creating so much waste. And so, um, but really, the help that would come from, like, you guys and people like that, how do we take these businesses? Because there's so many, there's so many hairstylists, makeup artists, and that's a billion-dollar industry. Like, how do we tap into that and monetize that, so that people don't have to continue to move away to have those careers flourish? Because most of, most of all of them are in Atlanta, even a lot of the DJs and things that we're pulling, people that we knew five years ago, or last two years, or whatever, have already moved to Atlanta, because they feel like they have to do that to be seen. And to be honest with you, that is where the steady work is. I also have a dual residency, but what about, I don't want to teach that to everybody, when we have all these amazing schools here in the, in the city and in the state, then you gotta go and move to LA just to make it, and I just think that's kind of insane, everybody can't afford to do that. So I hope that answered your question, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you all very much. You were such a good-looking group out there, I thought you were just sitting here, so I apologize, very stylish, and, um, I do apologize, because, um, the requests have been made to have you up earlier in the meeting. So thank you all for hanging around, and worthwhile for us to hear this. Thank you.
Well, we'd love to see you all, June 9th through 12th. Um, our VIP for 9th, the 9th and the 10th is $75, but thanks to the museum, thanks to Councilor Quinn and all the partnerships and community partners that we have, most people will attend free of charge, it'll be general admission, and it will still be fabulous, because there's gonna be, I was getting some deals while we're in here.
Thank you.
But, um, it's gonna be really, really fabulous, so I do hope that you all are able to join us, June 9th through 12th, to support the amazing artists in your city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Councilor Quinn, you're a com-
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry.
All right. Um, Eastlake Neighborhood Association has a meeting tonight, um, at 6:00 PM at Household of Faith, uh, church at 7501 Division Avenue. A special note there, the folks from, uh, Live Health Smart Alabama will be in attendance to present plans, um, for traffic calming on Second Avenue South in Eastlake, and, uh, improvements to Downey Park. So if you live in the Eastlake neighborhood, um, and wanna weigh in on those conversations, um, there, the, the residents at the neighborhood meeting are, are going to be considering, uh, this proposal and, and making a recommendation on it, so, uh, and encourage you to participate. Uh, feel confident that, uh, Councilor Abbott is gonna mention the Forest Park-South Avondale Neighborhood Meeting tonight at 6:30 PM at Avondale Library. Smithfield has a neighborhood cleanup on Saturday, June 11th, at 9:00 AM, starting at Friendly Baptist Church, located at 926 Street North. It would, if you would like to participate or need additional information, please contact my office at 254-2679. Um, for all of our cleanups, all you gotta do is show up, we'll have all the equipment that you need, trash bags, safety vests, gloves, um, the works, uh, we just need volunteers. Um, and finally, once again, there are two, uh, board openings that we are requesting, uh, people who are interested, apply for. Uh, the first is the Birmingham Parking Authority, um, for which you must be a city of Birmingham resident, and Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, of which, uh, the qualification is that you have to be a resident of Jefferson County. If you are interested in either of those, uh, positions, please email your resume, um, to, to me or my chief of staff, Maisha Hutchinson, at maisha.hutchinson@birminghamal.gov, uh, before Monday, June 20th, 2222. Thank you, and that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Councilor Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this week, we have five Neighborhood Association meetings. Uh, today, Fairmont Neighborhood will be meeting at 6:00 PM in person at Mount Caramo Christian Church. Uh, Monday, Englewood will be meeting at the Englewood Rec Center at 5:30 PM. Uh, Airport Highlands and Roebuck will have a combined Neighborhood Association, a Neighborhood Association meeting this upcoming Monday at the Johns Hopkins, uh, Rec Center at 6:00 PM. And Monday, we will be having, um, the Wood Lawn Neighborhood Association, uh, on Zoom at 6:00 PM. Um, if you would like to get more information about the details of how to attend those meetings, uh, go to the Birmingham City Council website and find District 4. Uh, scroll all the way down to get the addresses and access codes, uh, to all your neighborhood meetings for this month. meetings for this month. Wednesday at 10:00, 10:00 a.m., the Woodlawn Library will be having their Go Wild with Hydrania's workshop. This workshop will teach plant lovers the significance of having hydrania, as well as many other plants. For more information, email daviddoggett@william.darby@cobpl.org. Let me see, this Friday at Antioch Baptist Church in Collegeville, they will be having Ladies Night, starting at 6:00 p.m. The church, Antioch Baptist Church, is located at 3309 33rd Street North, Birmingham, Alabama. For more information, please call 205-643-5601. Curious as to what Ladies Night at church will be, so. Saturday at 8:00 a.m. in the Inglewood Neighborhood, we will be having their litter-free cleanup day. To get involved, please call 205-470-9360. And this Saturday at 5:00 p.m., Woodlawn Neighborhood will be having their first night street market from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that's located at 55th Place South. Yeah, come out for some local food, some goods, music, a lot more, it's gonna be exciting. So, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Now, the World Games will be here in 30 days, and not only do we need to be ready, we have to be ready. The next planting and zoning meeting is on Wednesday, June 8th at 3:30 p.m., that is tomorrow. Tonight, June 7th, the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association Meeting will be held at 6:30 at the Avondale Library. Please be safe and take care.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Woods?
Couple of announcements here, let's see. Number one, Keller Springs is gonna meet tonight, their neighborhood meeting at Smith Middle School at 6:00 p.m. And then this Saturday, we'll continue the be litter-free efforts, meeting at Springville Road Library at 9:00 a.m. So definitely want to invite everybody to come out and continue supporting that. Also want to invite everybody out to the Man Up Breakfast this year, and so pretty much everybody knows, Councilor Hoy started this at least 10 years ago. And so I agreed to kind of pick that up and carry it forward, and so we're excited about it this year. Want to invite everybody out, so definitely appreciate anyone who would be interested in coming out. And Roddy White will be our keynote speaker, and there will be a panel talking about closing the wealth gap. And so looking forward to a good event, a brisk get-you-in-and-out type of morning. And definitely, anyone interested, you can register online, it's a free event, so look forward to seeing everyone.
And time, place, date for that?
It'll be 9:00 a.m. at the Crossplex on June 18th. So asking me dates and times on the spot, may not always go well, but-
You responded to it well, thank you very much. Thank you. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. We have some neighborhood meetings. Wyllam Neighborhood will meet this evening at 6:00 p.m. in person at the Wyllam Library located at 4307 Avenue Wyllam. You can also join via conference call by dialing 720-740-9863. Access code is 6589380. Oak Ridge will meet Thursday, June 9th at 4:00 p.m. via conference. The dialing number is 952-206-4918. The code is 223418. Hooper City will meet Thursday, June 9th at 6:00 p.m. in person at Hooper City Rec Center located at 3901 Fourth Street West. You can also join the meeting via conference by dialing 952-206-4918. Access 223418. North Birmingham Neighborhood will meet in person on Monday, June 13th at 6:30 at the North Birmingham Library located at 2501 35th Avenue North. You can also join the meeting via conference call by dialing 452-436-6348. The access code is 10223266. Announcements, next public safety meeting will be Tuesday, June 14th at 1:00 p.m. Council Chamber, you can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray later than Thursday, June 9th by 1:00 p.m. As District 9 continues the beef litter-free campaign, I think we are leading the pack, y'all. We have two cleanups this weekend, June 11th from 1911 on this Saturday, so they will meet up at 8:30 Central Pratt. We'll meet at the House Sanford at 8:30. The Rec Center is located at 320 Avenue D, Pratt City, 35214. And North Pratt will meet at 8:30 at Peace Baptist Church located at 1300 10th Street, Birmingham 35214. And that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Overton Neighborhood will be meeting tonight at 6:00 p.m. Roebuck Springs Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Both of those are in person at the regular places. We have this Friday, June 10th, we're partnering with USFL and Alabama Bass Masters for kids' fishing skills and football techniques out at Eastlake Park. It will be at 2:00 p.m. We would love to have your school-aged children out there. If you would like to RSVP a spot, please call our office at 205-254-2348. Or you can call Ms. Bailey on her cellphone at 205-215-3660. And then obviously, the fishing rodeo is this weekend, which we're all very excited about, 8:00 to 1:00. We'll be stocking the fish the night before, the day before rather, and so there should be lots of, 2,000 pounds of catfish out there. Last year, we had a couple thousand people out there, and I hope that we can do that again. So we're excited about it, it's rain or shine, and bring your own fishing pole and bait.
Thank you very much. Councilor Pro Tem?
Thank you for the t-shirts.
Yes, yes.
They're awesome.
First come, first served, t-shirts for people of all ages and sizes, so.
Oh, thanks, Hunter. We had a good public hearing last night, thank you. We had all nine councilors there, I think it was very good, it was very productive. And our next public budget hearing is Thursday, June 16th at 5:30 here in the council chambers. As far as neighborhood meetings, the Mason City Neighborhood will meet today at 4:30 virtually, and the calling information is, the calling number is 712-770-8017. The access code is 843426. Also today at 4:00 p.m., Oakwood Place will be meeting at Harrison Park. We will be have, well, there will be a We Love Tousville Day this Sunday, June 12th, from 1 to 4, at the old Mark Steel Building across from Memorial Park. There will be vendors, food trucks, this should be a good time. The District 6 Pop-Up Farmer's Market will be this Saturday from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. at the Bethesda Family Life Center across from More Than Congress Faith Church. The physical address is 1721 Steve Green Drive, Birmingham, Alabama 35211. Walk with your counselor will be tomorrow, June 8th, at Memorial Park Walking Trail from 6 to 7, and this Thursday at the Weston Walking Trail from 6 to 7. This Saturday, we are partnering with Black Warrior Riverkeeper in the Weston Neighborhood for a cleanup in the Weston community at Harrison Park from 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. Let's see, what else? The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be Monday, June 13th at 3:30 p.m. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance Meeting. Email submissions to Laquita Wilson and A.J. Gray. And also, we will be having a PRC meeting today at 2:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Announcements for District 7, we have several neighborhood meetings coming up. Thursday, June 9th, we have the Roosevelt City Neighborhood Meeting, that'll be at 11:00 a.m., that's via conference call, 425-436-6337. The access code is 6868376. Then we have two neighborhood meetings next Tuesday on June 14th. The East Brownsville Neighborhood will meet at 6:00 p.m. via conference call, that's 605-313-4198 with the dialing 461297. And then Riley Trevallik meets at 6:00 p.m. at Noble Chapel CME, and that's at 3700 Maple Avenue. We have the following committee meetings coming up for Wednesday, June 15th. There's the Committee of the Whole, that will be at 3:30 in council chambers. The next Utilities Technology Committee Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 21st at 2:00 p.m. And the Administration Committee, we're scheduled to meet Tuesday, June 28th at 2:00 p.m. I'll check these times, they don't, the 2:00 p.m. one, but the Administration Committee, I'll check that time. Also, I want to thank the neighbors of the Industrial Center Neighborhood in District 7. They called for a cleanup on Saturday, was a small but mighty group, but we did have a lot of opportunity to just work with those neighbors, and they had four or five streets that make up that neighborhood, they were really concerned about the dumping, so we got to see a look at that and what's going on with that. So I want to thank the Neighborhood Secretary, Ms. Jan Bates, as well as the Neighborhood President for spearheading that for us and getting us out there. We also had the opportunity to host our District 7 Neighborhood Officers during our Quarterly Chat and Chew, that was last week. We did have representatives, we had our Department Public Works Director, as well as we had representatives from Code Enforcement, and we did get a preview of See, Click, Fix. So a lot of opportunities there to hear information regarding a lot of the information or issues that were shared with us today. I want to thank Mayor Whitman and Chief for the staff for providing that information for us. Our residents, our neighbors, neighborhood presidents really enjoyed hearing that information. The Mobile Market, which offers healthy, fresh, affordable foods, that will be in District 7, that'll be Tuesday, June 14th, from 1 to 3 p.m. We'll show the video at the end of the meeting that chronicles our Chat and Chew. Again, we want to thank PIO staff and Government Affairs Team for helping us with that. We want to thank our officers on duty today, Cedric Pinkard, Tevin Erby, and Leronica Ashford. We appreciate your service for us. And Councilor Tate, I believe you had one or other?
Madam President, I just have a quick correction on the cleanup, this Central and South Pratt, that's gonna be doing their joint cleanup.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam.
Thank you. I have noticed quite a few cleanups going on every weekend, so we're getting out there doing our part to try to make Birmingham clean. Thank you all. Yes, ma'am?
Can you repeat again when the Administration Committee?
Yes, that is according to this note. It is Tuesday, June 28th. But let me check those dates, because we're a little bit far ahead, so let me check and confirm that, that date, I'll get back with you on that. At 3:00?
I'll put it on there.
Okay. I'll go back and confirm that, because this information, I'm not quite sure if it's correct. Thank you. This time, could we have a, thank everyone for their participation today, thank Administration, both the Mayor's Administration and our Council Admin Team for supporting us and making us look good up here, how about that? All right, can I have a motion for adjournment?
All in favor, let us know by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Hi, Councilor Wardian Alexander, I'm here with District 7 Neighborhood President, and we're here today for our Quarterly Chat and Chew.
I think an open meeting with people that you can talk to, one-on-one, and get a better understanding of what's going on, because in the past, you get an email or whatever, but then you can't talk to the email if you want to see that person, that individual in person.
Today, we're focusing on some new resources that neighborhood leaders will have in order to correct some of the issues and problems that are occurring in our neighborhoods. We're very excited to have members of the mayor's staff here from the Department of Public Works and Code Enforcement, and they'll also be talking about a new feature, See, Click, Fix, that we're all excited to see come out and help us resolve some of our issues in our neighborhoods.
Whenever you get these complaints or you have issues that are brought to us, now we have a way to look at that through the data and generate results.
See, Click, Fix is a new app that residents will be able to go into, and instead of calling 311, you'll be able to enter your issue or your complaint directly from your cell phone. So this is very exciting. It also has a GPS component where it knows where I am when I'm entering that issue, and I'll be able to take pictures and send them directly to 311. So I believe this will enhance the work that's been done by 311 and able to resolve our issues quickly.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.